Okay, six o'clock is time to follow. Order of Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission leaving tonight. At this time, I'd ask you to please stand. I have Brother Jimmy Roberts to do a invocation for us tonight. Jennifer Graham to do the pledge for us, please.
Let us pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beauty of this day, for the opportunities that you've blessed us with, especially this evening that we can symbol here together as neighbors and as friends and as people of this community. Father, we're thankful for this board that has been put in place here. We ask your blessings to be upon them tonight as they look at making these decisions that have come before them. Father, we're thankful for this city and all its leaders, a place that we call home. Father, we ask your blessings upon Mount Pleasant as he goes into the future, that decisions will be made that are according to thy will, Father. And Father, we always pray that you bless those things that are good. But Father, we also pray that you defeat those things that are not good in thy sight. Father, tonight, we're thankful, most of all, for the blessing of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. But Father, we realize the most precious gift of all that you gave us. Father, we pray that you'll be with us as we continue on. May your word guide us through this whole world each day. Be with us, Father, until one day when we can look to having that home in heaven with thee. Heavenly Father, all these things are praying in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Looked like we had a good crowd tonight. Let the minutes reflect that everyone's in attendance tonight on the boards. Item number three, be approval of the agenda tonight.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, approval of meeting minutes. Fire meeting June 14, 2022.
I make motion, we approve the minute.
I have a motion.
A second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, plot approval.
There are numbers, Chair.
Item six, rezoning request. I'll turn this to you.
Item A on the rezoning request, RZ 2022 dash C dash thirty-three, zero, three, one, parentheses, RZ one. Applicant Alan Blevins has submitted an application to rezon property from CN to R3 located at Sugar Creek, near Sugar Creek. The property consisted of 1.19 acres. If you pull that up on property data, the property map, the parcel, it is, he's added a parcel to that, so the acreage is not correct. It's a little over two acres now. So I don't know if the lag of the property data is what's flowing that up. But I went back, rechecked, and remeasured that, and it actually comes up to 2.18 or 2.2.
Because we did that in front of this board, not longer ago.
Right.
Make it behind the lots.
Come by the lots. But consistent of around 2.15 acres being further identified on tax map 133 parcel 009.06 and on file to Murray County Register deed. As you, as presented, Mr. Blevins did present a sketch plan of kind of type of homes he's kind of wanting to build in the area. And on the back is a layout of that. There, he's wanting to go from the neighborhood commercial to the R3 zone.
Now, the neighborhood commercial now, we only do R1, R2, right? With the changes we made a few months ago.
That was, that was the downtown district, residential homes downtown. Yes. Because at the time, the downtown just called for upper story residential instead of the old style homes that was in the downtown district already. Any questions?
Did the planning commission make a, or the planning department make a recommendation?
The planning department's recommendation is to go to R3 with this. Due to the CN designation, if you look through the zoning ordinance that they adopted, that it has been adopted, there's no primary street frontage for the CN to work for that as far as on the design standards, as far as the entryway. So you'd be coming off of this side street, which is on the Sugar Creek area going back to Brookside. So, you know, the primary street, that's not considered a primary street.
It's the planning commission seeing Mr. Hager's comment.
Yes.
Okay, so you have that.
Right.
Rodney, I thought when we did the downtown, we went down past that area, did we not?
Downtown.
Overlay?
Yeah, well, we, yeah.
No. It stopped at the Mexican restaurant.
Yes, it stops at First Avenue.
166 First Avenue.
Okay.
No, I think what Rodney stated, it's pretty intricate. However, the frontage for this whole parcel is really oriented towards Main Street. There have been some proposals in the past to use that for commercial uses, but really, it seems to make more sense for residential. The higher density residential could act as kind of a transition from the single families up to the more commercial frontages. So it seems like a good logical proposal. Obviously, y'all get to make that recommendation. The city commission makes all the decisions.
Sorry?
You have the drawing in front of you, too?
Yeah, we do.
We've got an apartment building right by there.
Appreciate it. Is anyone here got to speak on this matter that we're discussing right now? Come forward. State your name. I think everybody knows you.
I'm Alan Blevins. I'm the one that's been mowing and planting and planting taffeta on that spot for 30 years. Isn't it about three acres? I have to look it up. Anyway, we expanded it substantially to accommodate the R3 zoning to, we looked at, my family and I looked at the best thing to do for the property, is to just mow it and paint it off patches on it. Went to develop something that was very nice and not to take away from our property right in front of it.
Right.
And we think long term would be the best thing. And we're going to sell the property. I mean, that was our goal, with interest rates. And the cost of building doesn't kill us. But we're trying to have a nice plan to enhance that area. And I think long term, we looked at, it's commercial now, but I don't want to put storage units and barbed wire fence to look like a prison. So it's more profitable, but I don't think it's what Mount Pleasant might need. But we're open to any questions.
The tax record says 3.31 acres.
I'm agreeing with her.
I mean, 3.31 acres.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
I think it just picks it up on a computer. And so there's a lot more acreage than.
We've got a little more information.
Just spread it out, thank you.
When you say you intend to sell it, you don't mean that the whole project, you, the unit?
No, 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 individually, yes. No, we're going to keep some. No, 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 no. We don't want to do that.
That's what I understand.
Yeah, that's the plan, anyway.
Thank you, Alan. Anyone else here to speak on this matter? Come forward, please. State your name.
I'm Mary Ellen Wilson, and I live at 316 Brookside with my husband. And our property is directly, excuse me, adjacent to this property. I just wanted to point out that, not that you don't know this, but right behind our house, we're having 40 new homes built that will bring in another 40 more and more families when they're completed, which is going to add significantly to that subdivision. And to add townhomes now in this narrow piece of property, I think will add an awful lot more to that subdivision and increase the congestion and traffic that, in that, in that area where the entrance is to the subdivision. So I personally am opposed to it, and I think that it's just adding too much to that particular subdivision.
Okay, I understand. Anyone else?
James Compendium, I'm at 102 Brookside. I'm actually next door neighbors.
Right.
And I agree, everything that she said there with the properties and everything, that take away all our privacy and things, congestion, everything that's there. Plus, we already maintain just about weekly cleaning up garbage in our yards from the dumpsters and everything else that's around there. So we're cleaning up everyone else's trash. And this, I think, is going to be a lot more. And I say if we cannot stop this project from going through, at least I suggest at least an eight foot fence going across so we don't have to get all that noise and traffic and everything else in our yards.
I can hear you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Any discussion from the board?
Planning commission, remember this is the rezon.
Y'all have this in front of you?
You have that orange card. Need to consider when you're deciding whether the change should be made.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the gentleman that just spoke, there is a buffer that would have to be in place, you know, to separate.
We're discussing rezoning. That would come on your site plan.
Right, including your traffic.
Right, yeah. What we're doing here is a rezon.
In the finishing out of the homes there in Brookside and Sugar Creek, there is another egress that can go towards Gray Lane, too. Just so you're aware of that.
If not, I entertain a motion on this rezoning request. I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Do a roll call on this.
An emotion to approve the change to R3.
That's correct.
Commissioner Granberry?
Yes.
Bobby Nutt?
Yes.
Douglas Marshall?
Yes.
Jennifer Graham?
Yes.
John Hunter?
Yes.
Five, zero motion passes.
And I assume this is based off of the comments from Rodney and Will?
That's correct.
The amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area.
As we move on, item B.
Item B, RZ 2022 dash C dash zero, three, two, parentheses, RZ two. Advocate John King has submitted an application to rezon property from CH to R3 located at 1120 First Avenue. The reason why the First Avenue address, the property comes all the way out to that end.
Correct.
The request to rezon 59.4 acres located near Highway 43 and South Cross Bridges. The property is further identified on tax map 133 parcel 1.00. The map shown, the very first map that's included in your, in you guys' package, is for the rezon. They're going to keep the front highway commercial lots, as you can tell with the line. And the rest of that is what's going to be R3.
As part of the proposal.
As part of the proposal. And the next page is kind of a concept idea.
So this is only a partial rezon request, right?
Yes, sir. Just a rezon request of 59.41 acres.
That is a, are they in compliance, I mean, on the zoning change?
Yes, sir. The access, the roads, you know, it fits with the transportation, the exits, and everything fits with that area. If you're next to the schools.
And Will, I think you, what you presented to them is similar to that fact that it's right along 43 makes quite a bit of difference.
Yeah, the property has really good access to major transportation routes, civic services, parks, schools, close to downtown. So in the past, when R3 has not been recommended for it, it's because it's more remote from those types of services.
Good, thank you. Have anyone here who wants to speak on this matter tonight on the rezon? All right, that's fine.
Shaw Daniel, 845 South Cross Bridges Road. Is the property that's being considered just a portion that's across from the hospital and that area there?
Just out of 43.
Yes, yes, this partial on this side of 43.
What I saw is this. Obviously, it wraps around me as well.
Right, yeah, it goes across.
So the R3 zoning, what does that allow for building? That's what they're being asked to have it rezoned to, R3?
Yes. You go through your 5,000 square foot lots for your single family. You can do your multifamilies and your townhomes, you know, you know, for the lots.
It is high density.
So how many are we talking about possibly to be built on this lot? About 150 of those lots on this thing. We're having 150 lots potentially built right there at that location.
Right.
The townhomes that they're proposing be next to 43 bypass, that side.
229.
And the bigger density or the lot sizes would be in here, would lead over to Meadow Road and that area, kind of lean back into that.
So how many families are we potentially gaining it with just this development?
You're probably looking at approximately about 350. That's guessing as to what's on the flat is.
And what's on Cross Bridges already, adjacent to 43, that's not, doesn't need to be rezoned. They're talking about a bank, possible convenience center, and something else for the commercial.
Along the front.
And the residential would be behind it.
It's important for y'all to remember, at this stage, you're just deciding whether R3 is appropriate for this area. That concept plan can change.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the bigger picture. I've got homes being built on this side, getting homes built on the other side. So kind of completely, I'm just trying to look at all of it and see what the impact's going to be in that particular area that I've been at for quite a while, so.
I understand. I just want them to, we're not banking on a particular development.
And that was one of the concerns I had last week when the statement was made. My intent is to build a single family home. So what is the true definition of a single family home? Does that include cottage homes, townhomes, condominiums? Is it a single house that's particular?
You know, the R1, single family homes, about 18,000 square foot lot. In the R2 district, there are 15,000 square foot lot. But you have the option to build a two-family residence.
Two-clacks or something, yeah.
So that's be the difference. And then you get into your townhomes, which is more, and this, or, or, that's where we do it.
Which is part of R3. That's in the plan.
Kind of do the math on that.
I understand. While we're working on those, the rezon right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Anyone else here to speak on this report?
Mr. Chair, since I would be here with you tonight, my name's Lonnie Thompson, 618 Meadow Road. The, I've been wondering how long it would take before this property was developed, but it's here. So let's just deal with it. My main concern is, and I know you haven't got the final site plan on it, but first of all, I would like to see all the natural buffers left in place. There's a ditch that runs behind Meadow Road, and I would like to leave that. The R3, I just feel is a little too much. The US 43 bypass is a high exposure corridor. R1, R2 would look much more appealing than a hodgepodge of housing. How would Mount Pleasant like to present itself? And also, if I go to page 40, and this reads true, it's the full intent of its purpose. And it reads on every one of these R districts. These districts are intended to be medium density residences, R2, residential areas permitting single family, two-family, and multifamily residents and related uses, which, and here's my point, which are in keeping with the character of the district and which are intended to complement the lifestyles of the residents as well as preserve the amenities of the area. So this Pleasantwood subdivision borders most of this property. But with my mind, it is kind of a extension of this Pleasantwood subdivision. And I think that it should kind of maybe R2, R1, maybe even RS. When I first talked to Mr. King, he told me that he was going to build big lots, big houses. This has changed, but that's just my opinion on it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us what you were reading from? Is that the Mount Pleasant?
It's from the Mount Pleasant zoning ordinance.
Is that a new zoning ordinance? Because we, we updated it.
Yeah, we don't have R.
I think you might have old one.
Well, it may be old, but the intention is the same.
It was updated in 2018.
Yeah, we updated it.
Believe me, I know we did, because we were caught in.
Let me ask you this. Did you change the language in keeping with the character of the area?
I don't have it in front of me right now.
I do.
In which, in R2, or what were you reading from?
Jennifer reads the same in every one of them.
Okay.
So R3 will not be able to complement an R2. R2 can complement R1. You'd be looking at R3 district or R2. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. I mean, I can.
R3 is on the lower scale, and it's not going to pull up and override a two.
I mean, I can read it if you want me to.
I just wondered if that language changed. That language should not have changed.
But we readopted a brand new zoning ordinance. But everything changed. There may be some things that are similar, but I don't know that. We adopted a brand new ordinance in 2018.
Well, I might need to get what Kate can get me.
Yes.
But, I mean, the full ten of that is, it shouldn't have been changed. I mean, you want to keep consistent. You don't want little bitty houses and big houses and shopping center. It needs to stay consistent, but neither way.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jessica Evans. I'm on South Cross Bridges Road. I actually have more to say on the next one, but I did just want to point something out that I do think is applicable to this committee. And that is, my understanding is this commission's to try to determine if it is suitable for the area. And how many homes did the previous one just say? 350?
Yeah.
Potentially 350. And then this is also connected to South Cross Bridges Road, which where they're talking about in the next one, which is where I have more to say. But is 140. So you're looking at a potential of 450 people on one road where there's already been deaths and accidents. And it's also a rural country area for a reason. So in fitting for the community, I would caution that this is not something that the city may want to take on. I mean, that's 450 homes. You have to police, fire, water, traffic. If you extend into other people's property, you'll have to pay on that. There's just a lot to consider, so please consider that. And I have another comment for the next time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, there will be a traffic study at later bay.
Anyone else? I need, got any?
The applicant is here, if he would like to speak anything. Have any voices for them?
Or whatever, any questions for them? If not, I entertain a motion.
Again, reminder that you're using my orange sheet.
And she's at the part of your discussion. There any discussion on this? You don't have to make a motion first. You can, you can.
Well, so, I mean, I'm looking through these points of what, you know, the zoning limits. And I, I mean, one of the things is, does it in agreement with the land use plan? I mean, being where it's located and, you know, our plan and schools and, you know, I feel like that is met.
That's based off of your reading of R3?
Mm-hmm. And then, I mean, number two, is no adverse effects upon adjoining property owners. I mean, I know there's some people here that feel like it will, but I mean, it does, there will be boundaries and there will be studies done for all of that.
There'll be buffers. There's a lot of things that takes place at the next phase of construction of the, before the construction ever starts.
It's a lot of density. That would be my comment. I'd be more apt to be, be an R2.
I would be more going with an R2 because of the traffic and location, and I just think it's a little much to put it in R3.
So that would knock those, all those townhouses out, right? And just commercial. No, no, they're not changing it.
You're right. Already is on correctly.
I got it. I remembered that. I sent in my work email.
And this, well, this plan isn't the file.
No, no, of course not.
All these singles could be townhomes when they come back.
If we do R3, it could.
Could be, right.
But if we do R2, we would not have a single family.
That's what I'm agreeing with this. If we make it R3, they come back, it could be.
We couldn't do apartment complexes, can't, aren't. Where do apartment complexes fall?
That is the commercial side.
So it's not in R3, yeah, that's what I thought.
It can be in R3, that's what I thought.
It wasn't either, I'm sorry.
It's multifamily. I mean, multifamily's an apartment.
Look, I know where things are. Look, I'm so proud.
You want to speak, Gerald?
Yeah. Hey, he wants to talk.
Excuse me. Right here.
I'm Gerald Vick with WS Engineers, and I'm the one representing the client on this project. I just wanted to say that this entire parcel is presently highway commercial zone. So we kind of thought this was maybe a bit of a downzoning on it, and maybe that would be favorable, you know, look favorable for that. But I just kind of wanted to make sure that y'all understood the whole parcel.
The whole parcel is zoned with those three front things that we talked about.
Right, the whole thing is highway commercial now. So that's, that's one of the reasons we're coming, you know, with this is that a big commercial use that might fit into that might create a lot, a lot different scenario with a lot more traffic, things like that could be, you know, a concern, so.
But the difference is, you wouldn't have as many people at one time if it was all, I mean, you could put a wall must there, and people are going to be in and out. They're not going to be there all the time. And when you put all these houses and townhouses, you're talking kids, family, peoples, and streets. And to me, it's just a little much for both of them. I'm willing to do homes, R2, but I just think R3 is a little much for that area.
But what is allowed in the commercial highway? But what is allowed in the commercial highway?
I have to, I have to.
You could have 24-hour operations as well.
Food and beverage.
Walmart has some small operations.
Hotels.
It's not like all the townhouses.
You have hotels there.
Service stations.
Vehicle stop.
I know we will talk about traffic. We talk about it every time. Um, any type of development, you know, traffic city could be required to see whether or not and the road needs to be improved, um, to support the development that's being proposed.
Which is a plus because I do know about all the deaths and, um, prosperous roads and stuff. And, I mean, that's how we end up with the by dock down here. Thank you, Lord. And with development, you know, that would be something that they will look at as far as a stoplight or, you know, about a traffic cross there. But, I'm still not agreeing that that many put there.
What are the thoughts on R2 instead of R3?
I, I haven't really looked at it with my client. If, if that's something that the board thinks would need to be considered, then I would request that you defer it and let us discuss the options with them. They weren't able to come tonight, so.
You can't, just can't come back and change the request, can you?
They could. I mean, if they could just, he would have to resubmit a different request.
Okay, that's what I mean.
If it goes through here.
But if we table it and defer it, it will still have to come back and do a request.
If we were to request something different.
Something different.
It'd have to be changed.
Yeah, okay.
Again, we felt, we feel like, you know, we're looking at trying to do something that was a, a downzoning in relation to the, to the, to the existing potential of the, the property. And it's something, you know, the rooftops are, are, you know, what people are looking for right now. If you have more, you're gonna have to have more rooftops to bring other things to the community, so, you know, to be able to support the other things.
Understood.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, Mr. Davis?
White Davis, which I live out on Pope Lane, not close to there. But, I guess the thing that bothers me, you know, I know we wanna sort of keep our, I know we're gonna grow, but we wanna sort of keep our thing, you know, nice as we can. And when we start talking about R2 homes, how many homes are you talking about? That's, that's something you gotta look at. How many homes did you say?
We're not looking at R3.
We're looking at R3.
We're asking to look at R2. We've not looked.
Right. Okay, but I'm saying, oh, you know, if you look at R2, you're still looking at, at different, at a lot of different.
Yeah, that's true.
They have to be a lot.
We could come in and say, hey, we decided to put all duplexes on this property. And that, once you go to R2, it's R2.
That's true.
I just want, you know, y'all think about that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
The new zoning ordinance, does it mention modular homes? In this old rule, it does. Modular homes, pre-manufactured.
I, I think, I think, I think that changed. I don't, yeah, I don't think it's on there.
Yeah, you cannot put them in, in cylinders. That's not in our zoning code anymore.
I think it changed.
Yeah. I do know that.
I just, as, as the chairman of this board, I got something to say. And I know we got some other issues coming up. We're an appointed board. We make recommendations which go to the city council. I suggest that everyone in this room tonight, be it the meeting Tuesday night, because whether we in favor or against it, they have a final say in this matter. Am I correct, Jorge?
Yes.
And, you know, we, we do the best we can up here with what we're presented. We take a lot of our information from Rodney and his department and Will, the contract engineers for the city and stuff. And, uh, we try to make the best decisions we can up here. But, if you wanna really be heard, you go to them people that you elect. We're appointed. And I'm, like I'm saying, if we, we go against it, they could turn right around and say, well, this could be in the best interest of the city. I just want everybody to be aware of that. That's all I've got to say.
I agree. We just make a recommendation.
That's all we can do. Do the best we can. Any other, any other one wanna speak on this matter here? We gotta decide whether we're gonna entertain a motion or defer.
Are there options to approve or deny, obviously based on the findings of fact, or some sort of a deferral, or, wanna make sure they understand what the options are?
Yes, I mean, they can defer. We have to, I'd have to go back and look to see whether they're gonna have to, what they would have to resubmit and how we have to change our notice if they wanted to do that, but, um, you wanna give them the more time to look at it. You're not ready to vote, but this is, what's in front of you now is the R3.
That's great.
From commercial highway.
I don't think it meets the conditions. I mean, conditions in the area have not changed sufficiently to make it an R3. And, uh, there would be a group of property owners, a small group of people that would benefit, possibly at the detriment to the general public. I mean, with what information we have now.
Yeah, don't have a whole lot.
And I am elected official and I cannot go along with it right now. I just think that's too much for that area and I think it would be, uh, costly.
As the chairman, I wouldn't shun it towards our elected officials, but I, I think they should bear the weight of this here because, you know, it's, it's discussed and then sent to us.
I appreciate your votes and I do try to do what's best for the community. And I just feel like this is, I'm not running, um, yeah, already here, but I do feel like this is not good for the community right now.
We, we need, we need a, a motion on a deferral or, or vote against it.
What, I mean.
What would the developer rather, would you rather?
This I'm asking.
A vote or an order would you rather come back?
Do you wanna defer, defer?
If you resubmitted something different, it would be a different.
So, even if we deny, he could come back.
He could come back and come back different.
Yeah.
But if, if you make a decision today that's not a deferral, it's going to the city commission on Thursday.
But if you make a deferral, it won't go to us.
Correct.
Yet.
It gives him time to go back and talk.
And they can override what we do.
Not if we defer.
No, not if it's.
But I see, if we vote favorably on factors, up or down, they can change that.
Right.
Or send it back to you and have you think about it.
Look at it again and bounce the ball back and forth.
I make a motion that we defer it and he have time to talk to his client and work on something else. That's my motion.
Is August acceptable?
I have a motion for deferral on this matter here.
August meeting is the ninth.
On second.
On second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion to defer. Number seven, annexation request would be a good.
Memo you guys for Coria, help us with getting some light.
This is our ex, annexation request, AR 505102022, print seat AR1. Uh, applicant J. Jose from Harpitz Valley has submitted an annexation request and zoning request of R2 and a plan of services for a property located at South Cross Bridges Road. Property consisting of 115.6 plus or minus acres being further identified on the tax map, 127 parcel 20.00 and am filed Murray County Registered deeds. This property is being proposed for future development. They are asking for a R2, uh, density for the property that is, uh, this 115 acres is proposed to be developed.
The memo I just handed out, it's just, annexation is a little different than, um, rezone. It's not the findings of fact. It's a few other things you need to consider and a few other things that are not yours to consider.
So, annexation is, you know, a new process for this board. I don't know one, and this particular planning commission has gone through this process. I don't think Mount Pleasant has gone through this process under the newer statute. Um, so, what you're considering is a owner request for annexation. Um, in order to annex piece of property, what that means is you're agreeing or deciding whether to take that property into the city of Mount Pleasant and treat it like any other property that's already in the city limits. To do that, by state law, you have to adopt a plan of services that says what services you will provide and how. Um, this planning commission right now, what you are doing, um, is making a recommendation, just like you do with the rezones, through the city commission about whether or not you want to annex this property and whether or not the plan of services that has been a percentage is appropriate. So, that's the first piece to this puzzle is whether or not annexation, whether or not you want to include this property in the city limits and whether or not the plan that you've been provided is adequate, whether you think it's a good idea for the city, whether it benefits the citizens as a whole. So, that's the first piece to this puzzle. Um, I would ask that y'all consider that. Once you start talking, we'll consider that as one part. Um, the other thing is, what I'm sure everybody here is here to talk about, is zoning that parcel. So, if you decide to, uh, annex this property included into the city limits, you also would need to make a recommendation for how that property should be zoned. Because obviously, it would come into the city with no, with no zoning designation. Um, and so, we're recommending that you follow the same process for that property as you would the last two that you just did.
Your findings of fact.
Yes.
Have to be annexed first, though.
Correct, yes.
Yes, but, again, just like, uh, the chairman said, this is a recommendation by this board. Um, it would go to the city commission for a public hearing there on the plan of services and the final annexation. Um, and also a public hearing on the appropriate zoning. So, we're looking at this board for guidance on what the city should do. Um, you'll need to, you know, consider all, all comments and thoughts, but just keep in mind what, I just wanted to lay the groundwork for what your job is here today.
Hey, dude, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get started on comments on this here. I got a, I'll start with number one, Greg. Well, once.
Liam and Duff.
Liam and Duff.
Greg Loindow, I'm the owner of 955 Cross Bridge. Um, the last meeting, I know everyone wasn't here, so just for a quick recap to bring everybody up to speed, we had numerous concerns raised about this. Not pleased with the traffic. Um, I understand the traffic's getting coming, school impact here, which would be coordination with the county, utility coming from Mount Pleasant itself, specifically the water pressure to the current homes, my own included. Um, a hydrological study for water on the property based on the percolation. And then with annexation, now the city's responsibility of this building ends up putting water on the property that wasn't there. That was not addressed. Um, a lot of these things, when I've done a review of the comments, have not been placed there. Um, coming back to voting on appropriateness, R2 is single-family homes, third of an acre minimum or two-family homes. R1 zoning, and I took a moment to reread this, but specifically says that it is typically bordering agricultural use lands. That it's most land on South Cross Bridges. It also speaks to the traffic. The request for zoning to R2, I think, is inappropriate and too dense. The request for annexation right now, I can empathize that you're asked to make a recommendation and complete facts, but the number of concerns raised, I think, set you up for failure. Especially with, with this in the case that if something does happen, it does come back to the city council as well as the planning committee to say, did we look at all potential impacts here? Um, without addressing those, I would recommend that you hold on annexation and would consider the zoning itself as at a maximum R1 and under the covenants that the current homes along that road are placed on. One-acre minimum lots, all brick construction and limiting some of that.
Some of that's outside of our control, though. Unfortunately, unfortunately, but one thing, if we do annex it, the city would have control as opposed to the county. I don't know what the, the county would do.
I'm, I'm looking at the prior, at the prior deal. And my, my home is under that prior deal for building. But the prior deal, I think, should inform your thinking on this. So, um, I'll yield the rest of my time here because I know there's quite a lot left.
All right, thank you. Tommy Woolver.
Mr. Morris stated, I'm Tommy Woolver. I live at 998 South Cross Bridges Road, Mount Pleasant. I have a petition to present to you. We, the undersigned residents and property owners, would like to express our serious concerns and objections to the proposed annexation and development of the property known as 935 South Cross Bridges Road. I hope I got that number right. I'm not certain.
You know what you're talking about.
We feel this project would negatively affect our homes and our community. There are a number of problems with high-density subdivision would create, but the most serious problem would be the dangerous traffic conditions. South Cross Bridges Road and Massey Lane are not equipped to handle the number of vehicles this development would create. We ask the city of Mount Pleasant and the planning commission to deny this project. Now, I'm gonna start this on this side, ma'am, if you would please, and pass it down to yourself. Just, uh, I read that fast because I wanted, I didn't wanna use up too much of my time.
All right, we appreciate it.
Uh, 98% of the people on South Cross Bridges Road, Massey Lane and McCune Lane signed that position. The other 2% were either out of town or I couldn't find them. We have a nice community out there. Uh, it is a farm community. There will be at least 200 and probably 300 farm equipment implements running up and down that road on any given year. 300 is probably a very conservative estimate. Uh, you got the Daniel Farm, the Gillum Farm, the Ingram Farm, and of course, I have a small farm myself. Farm vehicles slow down traffic on Cross Bridges Road, excuse me, South Cross Bridges Road. There's not enough room to handle that kind of traffic. Uh, I feel that, uh, this would devalue some of the property of the people who have built houses along South Cross Bridges Road who had to use one-acre lots. Uh, they had to build those houses according to certain codes set up by the property owner who now is trying to sell the property to somebody else and dissolve those codes, which I don't think is fair. I think there would be water problems out there. I think right now, we've got good water pressure. However, I feel that if you add that many homes, how many homes are we talking about? Does anybody know?
160.
140.
160 or so, I think.
Yeah.
Well, uh.
Well, round it off 150.
Let's just take 150.
Yeah.
Uh, road maintenance is gonna be a problem. I understand that the city of Mount Pleasant's going to access or annex the road. I, I disagree with this. I understand that legally, the city of Mount Pleasant can annex the road, which is contiguous to the property that they're annexing. That being the case, could they annex property out at Dry Creek or Enterprise? One, you know, you, you, one road's just as good as another. Question that came across my mind. Highway 43 access is gonna be a nightmare. Now, I was told that the state is going to solve that problem for us. Folks, I'm sorry. I don't believe that. The state spent $10 million on those J-turns out there to save people's lives. I don't think they're going to take them out. My grandchildren drive up and down that road. Now, if a person pulls out on, uh, from South Cross Bridges Road out onto Highway 43 and they can't get out, what do they usually do? They take a chance. I don't wanna be taking chances out there and I don't want my grandti- grandchildren taking chances. I'm sure that the people who are sponsoring this, the, the landowner and developer, I'm sure they're good people. But folks, they are not worried about the safety of me and my grandchildren and the other residents out there. They're looking for that dollar. Sometime ago, I had a, a guy who was living in a neighborhood and it was a pretty densely populated neighborhood. And he decided to put in a business. And I'm not gonna tell you what kind of business it was because. And I'm not going to tell you what kind of business it was because if I did, most of you would know who and what it was. But when he discussed this with his wife, his wife said, how's that going to affect our neighbors? His response was quick and, and to the point. What neighbors? Folks, what neighbors are the people that signed this position, this petition that I gave you tonight? And I hope you're going to look at that petition. By the way, McCune Lane is not listed, but it is a, an offshoot of Massey Road, and it is part of that area. I'd be glad to answer questions if anybody's got one.
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the highway put that, I drive over there to prevent accidents before pulling out on it and see if people move over. No, they will not.
Well, I understand that, ma'am.
So it's not all, I mean, it's not always the highway. It's sometimes.
I understand that totally. And I try to encourage my grandchildren, as I mentioned just now, to make sure when they pull out on that road, they do so safely. But ma'am, they make safe cars, but there's no such thing as a safe car without a safe driver.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Tom.
Anything else?
Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm official Clarence Roberts, ten nineteen Massey Road. Most of you who know me know me as either Junior or JR. I appreciate the opportunity to come before this board. I've sat on the other side for a short period of time, so I appreciate what you do for the city of Mount Pleasant, the decisions that you have to make and you've made in the past. But I'm here tonight on behalf of our community, and that's, that's my main intent. This has been my home for sixty-six years, and when I sat on this board, of course, we looked at guidelines and things that were put in place. But one of the things we looked at was how did it impact our community? How did it impact the city of Mount Pleasant? How did it impact the citizens? So Mr. Wolver has elaborated on a lot of the concerns. There's no need of the fact that I get up here and, and go through all that again. You've heard that. But I am here to also ask the board to look at how this impacts all concerned. Of course, the annexation, the zoning. Of course, we, when we built in that community on Massey Road, that was the Jackalogue subdivision, and we came under this planning board at that time. Don't mean to go back and bring things forward from then, but the decisions back then were good decisions for the community. We all built nice homes. We built homes adequate to the ones who were already there, and they were on one acre plus tracks. So tonight, I'm asking this board as a citizen of this community to look at the impact. We certainly enjoy looking at some growth, but we don't want uncontrollable growth. We don't want negative impact to our city or our community and the people who live here. This concerns too many things that it negatively impacts. The traffic, the school, the utilities and everything concerned, there's going to be a great disadvantage for the city to actually approve this at this time. So I appreciate you looking at that, and again, I thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Junior.
Thank you.
Good evening. For you that don't know, I'm Wayne Lindsey, and I live at nine one one South Cross Bridges Road, but I'm also your school board representative. And as, as we and the school board are in the same times that you are dealing with growth, dealing with increase in population, we, we've tried as a board to go to planning commissions, whether it be City of Spring Hill, whether it be City of Columbia, and give our feedback as far as how these developments would affect school systems. And, and we've adopted a pretty generic way of thinking, and it's pretty simple, but every new home that, that we build in Murray County, and it brings us one step closer to having to build another school. Every, every new home we build in Murray County brings us one step closer to having to hire another teacher. And I've been, I've been told that there's those that said that schools are a county problem, but believe you me, that, that they're a problem for all of us. If you don't believe that, wait till you get your tax bill next time. But, so when we talk about school construction, and I just want to give you some, some numbers, but we're in the process of designing new high school off Keegan Road and Spring Hill at this time. It's in the design phase, but preliminary numbers we've gotten on that high school so far, we're somewhere in the three hundred and fifteen dollar square foot price range. We're working our best shot to get that number down, but, but that's what it's looking like. A high school, it's somewhere in the two hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot range. So you guys do the math, we're talking about seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five million dollars it, it takes us to build a high school. So for, for every home that comes in, we get that much closer. You guys talked about a, a potential development tonight that started out three hundred and fifty homes. We don't know as a school system if that means are, are we getting a hundred more kids or are we getting seven hundred kids? There, there's no formula for that because we don't, we don't know who's going to move in those little places. But also with, with each new development, every kid brings us one step closer to hiring another teacher. State puts restrictions on us, student teacher ratios, that says for grade levels K through three, we can only have so many kids per class that, and so we, we can only have twenty-two kids in, in a kindergarten class. Well, guess what happens at Mount Pleasant Elementary when we, when we have five classes with twenty-two kindergarteners in each one? One more kid causes us to have to hire another teacher. That's seventy thousand dollars by the time we, we pay all their benefits somewhere in that neighborhood. So it, it, it's something that affects us all. Our proposed budget for this year at Murray County School is a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. We are projecting enrollment somewhere around thirteen thousand. So if you do the math on that, we spend about ninety-five hundred dollars per student. Out of that hundred and twenty-four million dollars, about fifty-five percent of that money that comes from state government or comes from federal government, but forty-five percent of those dollars is going to come out of mine in your pocket directly, whether it be our local sales tax or whether it be property tax. So school funding, whether you have kids in schools like I do, I have three, or, or whether you're at a point in time in your life where you no longer have any, we, we all still get to enjoy paying for those. And that, that is something that affects us all. And from a school system standpoint, that's our stance on it, that, you know, no matter what development, any township is looking at, whether, no matter if the county's looking at it, the city of Mount Pleasant, every home that gets approved brings us one step closer to having to add a school or having to add staff, which is going to cost us all money. But now, I'm going to take my school board hat off and put my resident hat on. I live at nine one one, which adjoins this property that you're, you're speaking about right now. Also, my full-time job that pays my bills, I've worked for Murray County Government for seventeen and a half years, so I've, I've witnessed a, a lot of these meetings and, and I've seen a lot of things change in Murray County over the last seventeen and a half years. But there's a, there's a gentleman, Mr. Jerry Durham. He's assistant director for the state comptroller's office for the state of Tennessee. And what he will tell you is that residential growth pays for seventy percent of its sake. So for every home that moves in, you're going to generate tax dollars, and that's what a lot of people are looking at, we're going to generate revenue, but it only pays for seventy percent of its sake. So we got to come up with an other thirty percent somewhere. Well, guess where that comes from? It comes from everybody else. I said, I was on vacation last week and was bored one night and actually watched the Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting and watched them vote in a forty-one cent tax increase. You can go back and, and, and look at Murray County's budget meetings, they voted in a thirty-one cent tax increase. But i- if you explore and, and look at tax rates in other counties throughout the mid-state, go to Williamson County, go to Davidson County, those high populated areas, they don't equate to low tax rates. It, it, the growth costs money, and it's, and it'll cost all of us money. I, I too agree with what had been said, with what's been said. The R two zoning, I oppose because I think it negatively affects those neighbors. I, I live on almost a ten acre lot that adjoins that, but then if, if you, if you travel across Bridges Road now, those twenty or twenty-five lots have been developed on that front Cross Bridges Road, as we said, Mr. Ralston's here, he, he just built a spec home there, but there was restrictions placed there that, that had to be met, minimum eighteen hundred square foot homes, majority brick, concrete or hard surface driveways, they're minimum one acre lots. We're, we're in the neighborhood of five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars for those homes. And with R two zoning going down to a third of an acre, I have a real concern that those homes at front South Cross Bridges Road would be devalued. I appreciate your time.
Appreciate you listening to me.
Appreciate.
We'll back to you, Shaw.
Town name is eight forty-five South Cross Bridges Road. I have property adjacent to this development as well. So part of my concern is, you stated that you had to, to identify what services that were being provided to this. It is, I'll pick one sanitary. Is, is everybody going to be hooked up to the system?
So basically, what the plan of services says is that this property would be treated like any other property in the city. So once the developer comes back, if it gets annexed, the developer would come back with a plan, and at that time, we would do the traffic study, the letter of availability for water service, for sewer. We would assess, you know, yes, they're, they're proposing to put sanitary sewer in all of them at the cost of the developer to get it there.
The, the earlier development, I assume, would be the same situation with it as well. It wasn't that long ago when we did the field house at Mount Pleasant High School, and we, we had to jump through hoops and agree to shut down the restroom underneath the bleachers in order to bring that particular building online because there was a moratorium on having additional sanitary hookups to the system because the system wasn't sufficient to handle what was in place. And we're talking about adding an additional five hundred.
So the moratorium is, is released at this point, also the, if you've come to the meetings, you've seen that the city's spent a substantial amount of money updating the sewer system. So that project should be online. Lynn, Kate?
Yes, eighteen million dollars to correct those problems. We're well in our way to that, and we don't have a moratorium anymore.
So we're, we're increasing the capacity of what that particular site can handle.
Or we would never put it on there. We're not going to get in that position ever.
For the water line, are, are we increasing the size of the water line? Because at the time that we addressed this twelve years ago, we had a four inch line that was going to service this, this, at that time, it was asked to hundred forty-three developments be placed on this particular property, basically one per acre. But there was no, no provisions at that time to increase the, the service of water, which, which not only services this particular location, but all the way on around the road and multiple homes on passing. There are additional homes being built on beyond this as well. So does the city have provisions or plans in place to, to increase that service as well?
So they would submit what's called a letter of availability to ask engineering to see what type of water line needs to go in there to service their project. If there was something beyond that project that the city wanted to have a bigger water line, for instance, that's something they would talk with the developer about, trying to either reach a deal to make the, ask the developer to do more than they're already required to do. But the way the plan of services says is written right now, if you want the services, you go through the regular process like everybody else, the city assesses whether or not we can do it. Then you, then we follow it. The expectation, and it's written in the draft, is that that would be done at the expense of the developer, which is the same thing that would be for any other development that's already within the city limits. So this plan of services mimics the ordinances that we already have in place.
We're going to have two accesses to this new development.
We don't know.
We have no idea.
The owners here can speak to some of that.
I know with the limited access to it because of the homes that are currently there, there's either going to be one access near the second S curve and one in between the second and third home headed to the north. And I think it's like a fifty-foot easement through there. So to me, that's going to be a little restrictive and a pinch point there, too. Then, then with the road that they would be accessing, and I'm going to call it I, I forty-three because it's more like an interstate now than it, than it used to be. So it, ha- having no merge lane there, you pretty much had to pull up and stop, look over your shoulder at a, at a lane that's, that's accessing South Cross Bridges Road. So you don't know if there's a car just behind it or not. So you're really taking a chance when you pull out there to try to get up to the J curve. So that, that's a big concern for me there as well. So as, as far as the, if you pass the, the annexation, then you're going to consider the zoning. So the R two, I think, is, is highly unfair to those individuals who had, who had built those homes in the last three or four years right there, under an R one type of restriction with, with what they had to meet. Now, you're going to allow a lot smaller homes to be built in their backyards, driving through their houses to get out to the road, basically, the way, only way I see it can be done. So that's my concern is that, that we're, we're adding additional. Now, we're at five hundred homes right here, where you can just about put your hand over it on the map. That's a lot of people and a lot of traffic. And I, I just don't know that, that the area is designed or set up without major modifications to that intersection and to the roads to handle all the additional traffic. And, and I know the, if you jump a bunch of smaller homes right behind the nicer homes, those homes out front, their values have got to go down. So I don't think it's fair for them with the type of investments, with what homes cost today, that they spent to, to ask them to, to lose thousands of dollars in value on those homes. So that's what I had to say.
Thank you, Shaw.
I know you're looking at the big picture, but I just wanted to remind you and them that the plan that, the plan that's been submitted by the developer is not what they're considering today. That they're not, they don't know how many houses or where the line would be or where the entrances would be. They don't, they don't know that. That's not what they're considering yet.
What I know, I know from one side, they can't come through because that's mine. Other side, the road out front is the old.
You know that for sure.
So I know, I know there are limited locations for them to access the road, and, and the way I see it, it's only two. And then that's basically what's in the, in the map that I saw that's being asked to be annexed is for that road down South Cross Bridges Road right in front of my house, and then that turn in at between House two and three. And then there's another portion out there where it has access to, to the South Cross Bridges Road once it makes the first S curve, just prior to the second S curve, which is kind of a blind exit out of that subdivision, not knowing who's coming around that curve. So that's just a concern that I have.
Mr. Daniel, so we have to have two exits in order for the fire code to approve it.
So. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And I'm pretty sure I know where they're going to have to be. So I don't see any other option. Unless somebody's going to allow them to drive.
Let me, let me see if I, thank you, Shaw. I, I had something, save it off that in a minute. Jessica Evans?
Me again. I'm on South Cross Bridges Road, and a lot of what I've been said has been said already. So I'm not going to, I've had things written, I'm not going to read all of it. I will say one additional thing because it's been talked about annexing the road and all the traffic. If the city were to try to widen the road, I wanted to go on and, and point out that that's going to cost, the city would have to compensate for all the houses they would affect. And I'd also like to point out that I don't think it's fair to take property away from those of us to compensate, like to benefit one person. And I also don't think widening the road is actually going to solve the problems of the actual pulling out and everything that's the serious issue that's going on. And then the other thing that has been mentioned, but I feel like I, I just want to reemphasize that, I was a part of phase one, which was the, you know, had to be all brick, had to be a middle mamba base, you know, square feet, one acre lots that we keep saying over and over again. And part of it was, we'd been informed that. And part of it was, we'd been informed that the place behind us would be Phase Two, and it would be under the same restrictions. And so that, again, would be in our one zone. And so we feel like when it's suddenly being annexed, and suddenly being changed, that is unfair, and also not accurate to what the community's like currently. And then I'm looking to see, yes, I think, I think that pretty much everyone else has already covered what I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll probably butcher this. George?
Morales.
Morales?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Oliver. Glad to speak tonight. Do you mind if I approach your bench and give you all some information?
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you.
I think I have questions for you.
I've got a little screen standing. Thank you.
Yeah.
So what you see in front of you on the first page is the area that is supposed to be developed. This is called Perry's Place. Our area that we've already built on is also called Perry's Place. This was all one unit. And we talked about the restrictions. The restrictions were required for us to be minimum one acre lots, 1,800 square feet, all brick, concrete, we've heard all this. But what this does is it makes it very expensive property. And so we've got a proposed development behind here. And we talked about not really knowing the density that's gonna be going behind there. But if you're gonna be requiring the developer to pay for the infrastructure, they have no choice but to do condensed housing. I mean, there's just no other way around. It's just, building cost is just too expensive. So, you know, we're gonna have an area here that, if you look at the map, you can see all the water lines that are already on this property. And I've got a large area map that shows, this is the only property that is showing these water veins like this. I know there's water issues on this property, because on my structure, we had a very difficult time with water. We put French drains in, we did grading, nothing solved the problem. I ended up having to put a very expensive pumping system in there to get rid of the water. Now, this development is gonna have sewer, okay? Our septic systems are already in place. Septic systems work by absorption rates. If you add extra water to our fields, then the septic systems are not gonna work properly. So I just wanna point that out, that, you know, there's really no resolve for that. Also, on your second page, if you look, you'll see the amount of schools, and the students that are in the schools, and the capacity that schools can have. And if you look at the elementary school, right now, there's only 52 empty seats. This is last year's numbers. And Mount Pleasant School District is huge. I mean, it spans about 10 miles in all directions. So, you know, there's no telling how many homes have already been built this summer, how many are already posed on the books, you know? These numbers are filled up. And, you know, like the gentleman said, schools are everyone's problems. Schools are everyone's problems, roads are everyone's problems, you know? So to just defer that that's a county problem, whether it's a school or whether it's road, you know, we do have a personal responsibility. When we see something and it just doesn't fit, that, you know, we need to, we need to discuss it. So you can see on each school, the capacity is getting very, very small. So, you know, where are we gonna put all these children? And, you know, to build just one school is an issue. We're talking three schools right here, and three schools that have to be close to this area to absorb, you know, the population. And, you know, we have already got a teacher shortage right now. So, you know, it's just compounding the problem. And I do wanna emphasize something that's also very important, that's already been discussed, but when the state built that J lane, they built that when the population growth was not like it is today. Like you said, I-43, I mean, it is very dangerous getting, you have to put yourself at an angle to where you cannot see back there those cars coming. And then you have to whip over into that other lane to do a U-turn, to either start heading north, or to turn, continue down South Cross Bridges Road. Also, on this environment that's already been created, we've got about an average of one and a half acres per lot there. And this proposal could be 15,000. So that's, you know, we're talking 65,000 lots now, square foot, versus 15,000. It's not fair to those that have already invested their time and money. The owner set this up in place, you know? And now for the owner to say, "We don't care about this, we wanna go ahead and allow this", is wrong. So I appreciate you very much. Let me share my concerns, and I appreciate y'all's vote tonight.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Ella Dan Ralston?
Dan Ralston, 1037, South Cross Bridges Road. Thanks for the opportunity. Five weeks ago, we moved into 1037. We loved Mount Pleasant. We were in Spring Hill for a while, and this property is right in our backyard. We, I'm just shy of two acres. And I remember going back when we moved to Spring Hill, about 16, 17 years ago, early on, I was crazy and decided to help out, and was on the Economic Development Commission there. And Spring Hill was 22, 23,000, something like that at the time. And I remember us making decisions like this, starting the ball rolling, and saying, "Nope, we've got studies, we've got things that have gotta happen down the road. It's probably not gonna turn into as big as it is." And about 13 years ago, we said, "We've got to get out of here. It's crazy. It grew too fast. The whole entire community changed." And so we spent a lot of time and a lot of money on this property. We love it. We love the cows across the street from us. I love the Ace Hardware right down the road. And I love the creek when we get to take our dogs. We love our neighbors. And this was gonna be our forever home. And I remember talking to the, we were with Fern Foundation, and I was talking to the fencing contractor, and he said, "You know, it's gonna be about $15,000 for the fence in your, 'cause, you know, you've got just shy of two acres." And he said, "You know, do you want a privacy fence or not?" And I said, "Why would I need a privacy fence? I mean, that's crazy. I'm, I have this beautiful, and they're gonna be, you know, they're gonna build bigger homes back there, so why would I need that?" I would be against the R2 at all. Our family signed this petition. I like smart growth. I'm an entrepreneur at heart. I'm not against somebody being able to grow, but this is not that kind of place. We specifically spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of money picking a sweet, beautiful, great community that we wanna be in until we're retired. And so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Mary Ellen Wilson? I think we were here on the, one of the...
The first one.
Yeah, Mary and Larry. Rodney, you wanna speak again?
Right down the middle, Gregor. Once again, I'm Lonnie Thompson, 618 Meadow Road. I really don't have anything to do with this property, other than I was involved with it when I was on the planning commission. I might have some information here that's gonna help you out, I don't know, but this came to the planning commission in February of 2008. It was deferred to March 4th, 2008. I went back, turned my archives, and dug this old paperwork out. A request for sketch plat approval for the Cross Bridges subdivision located on South Cross Bridges Road, consisting of 140.94 acres and 113 lots by the owners. And I'm not gonna mention her name, but it's Terry Johnson as well. But anyway, well, it's actually, it's actually several owners over here. I was surprised by that. The water line was discussed.
Right.
Mr. Larry Holden, he's no longer with us, but he worked for the city. For people who don't know, he worked with the Water Department for many years. He informed Mr. Johnson the four inch line would accommodate 20 homes. But once he put a street in there, he would have to go to a six inch. This 113 lot was turned down. Mr. Randy Sprouts was the main opponent of it, but it got turned down. So they went back and decided they would allow the 20 lots, providing they install a six inch water line. Mr. Johnson stated he would be willing to install that six inch line, but he felt he should not have to, since that was not what he was promised in the first place. So when I came on, I started in April, but I got the paperwork in March. I was appointed to planning commission, and I need some clarification on this. They say Perry's Place, but everything we voted on says Terry's Place. But which is it?
I've always been told Perry's.
I always thought it was Perry's Place.
There it is, Terry's Place. And I know the letter the city sent out, they put, they marked in the P on top of the T.
Oh, I agree.
You should have the big sign down there.
It had Perry's Place on it forever, yeah.
But the, and Cory, you're probably gonna disagree with me on this, but this is section one of this tract of property, which is the 140 acres. So we're gonna call that the land. It was one block, it was not divided by highway, it's one block of property, section one. If you go over here and read Mr. Johnson's covenants, these covenants are to run with the land, and shall be binding on all properties. It doesn't say these covenants are run with the lot.
The, I did a title search on this property. I know other people have as well, but the recorded plat excludes the property that's being considered today from those restrictions and from the subdivision.
Well, that's, if you, if you read these minutes, Mr. Webb discusses that. But I've got into this before, and I've got a pretty good lawyer. And she, under her advisement, once you take a tract of property, that's what you go with. You don't have these covenants, these covenants, these covenants. You don't have a piece of property with 15 different covenants on it. If that's legal, that's fine, but it's not good business. That is not good business. The, these people, the 20 property owners, they paid a premium price for these lots. And I remember in 2008, they were pricey. But they paid the price for it, under the assumption of, or they thought of, and the covenants of the land, that this is what they were buying into. As a citizen of Mount Pleasant, I'm opposed to an annexation of the property. You are in the city, out of the city, back in the city, with property, out of the city, bordering the county. Sounds confusing, it's gonna be confusing. There could be confusion with the first responders. The services that will need to be supplied will outrun the tax collection for the property. I've seen Mount Pleasant annex property several times in the past, in an effort to generate more tax revenue, and it did not help. The town has gotten worse, the thought of more subdivisions and annexation bailing you out is on the air. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last one to sign up for the night. Rodney, you will have anything you'd like to ask?
I will. I think we've discussed it very well, we've had a lot of good comments and things to consider. The way we review these is objective. We're looking, is it within urban growth boundary? You have a very large urban growth boundary, this is within that, so you are able to annex it. If you do annex it, you do need to apply a zoning to it. Your residential zones are configured for the city. So I understand that there are some existing larger lots in this area. Your zoning doesn't require those larger lots. Private covenants are private. So if someone feels aggrieved by those private covenants, they, that's a civil matter that they can look into. It's not your responsibility to solve that civil matter for them. But if you have any other questions about zoning itself, or the process of developing these properties, I'm happy to answer.
Joe has his written recommendations ready.
Right. Yes, sir.
Well, we've got Kate here, I wanna know this, if it's a property of a lot of discussion. How many services does the city have to provide? I've always heard it was three: fire, place, and garbage.
We've got water, sewer, and gas utilities.
Well, I'm just asking you this, say like people on Pope Lane, people up Mount Jordan, they get place, fire, and garbage. I don't count the water, because that's just, but I'm talking as a town of Mount Pleasant, how many services do you have to provide?
I don't think there's a rule of what we have to provide. I've looked into, like, the Pope Lane annexation back in the mid-'80s, and the way it's worded is, you took, that services would be provided if they became financially feasible. I don't know how that annexation worked then. That's why you have to have a plan of services now? So that's all, that's all discussed upfront, whether or not you provide services?
Well, I was just curious, because I think the reason that they need this sewer on this Perry's Place, there's a big area up here. It goes from Lot One all the way down to about Lot Seven. It's reserved for subsurface sewage disposal systems by T-deck. And I'm assuming that if they get the sewer, that will go away. But there's no notes on here, that could be five acres, 20 acres? Don't know, it's a big area. That's the reason I was wondering about the services, if you did actually have to put sewer in.
If they're gonna be in the city, we would have sewer, that's part of the plan of services. But like Cory said earlier, that would all be, that doesn't, none of that's decided now. That's all later in your site plan.
Well, there's a lot of people now in the city that you don't provide sewer to, that may need it, I mean, they have a wet area, or there's a mess. But you're saying that they're gonna provide it?
If this development, it's in the plan of services, they would be on sanitary sewer.
Thank you. Any others? Rodney?
I think that owner would like to...
Sure. Say your name.
Jay Jose with Harvard Valley Homes, the president of that company. Certainly welcomed the opportunity to present the community to you, and appreciate all the feedback that I've heard tonight. You know, oftentimes, you know, community developments like these are certainly, this is not uncommon feedback, you know, and it's never looked at on the outset as a pleasant experience, but we strive to make sure that we deliver the opposite of that. Believe it or not, we do take in the feedback and the comments, and much of the concerns that I've heard tonight, I know they're gonna be addressed, particularly with the CCNRs as far as the requirements of the homes, as far as minimum square footages, quality building materials, quality of construction, how we manage the communities. That's our brand, that's our reputation, and so we, you know, we're aligned with that. And so I know for a fact that, you know, we will treat this community the same as we treat any others. You know, when it comes to road design, and actual lot counts and things like that, there's a lot of work left to be done, you know, before we get to that. And you guys, I'm sure, have seen what that looks like, is those preliminary plats, and residential developments, or industrial developments, or commercial developments are brought to you, certainly can understand the amount of work that goes into that, and we're certainly prepared to do that. We believe in this community. We believe that we're gonna add a positive asset to this community, and something this community's gonna be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Anyone else like to speak?
If you'd be in time.
Okay. Sure.
I'm a builder, too, general contractor, and anywhere I've ever built, I've always...
I'm a builder too, general contractor, and anywhere I've ever built, I've always lifted up the neighborhood around me, every single time. This is not going to do that. Thank you.
What I had to say, well, go with, if the annexation doesn't pass, we don't have to vote on anything else on here.
Correct. If it's not, if you're not going to recommend, will it become part of the city? Then you don't need to set a zoning for it.
Right. Just wanted to make sure.
I would ask if you are going to consider them, you consider those things separately with the annexation?
I understand it.
And again, this is the owner applicant, right? So if at any point the owner doesn't want to move this project forward, they can make a decision to not request, to withdraw their application. So I'm sure he would like to talk about those things if you have concerns about a different zoning or something like that. But the annexation is a separate thing, even though they're going to be blended together. Not sure if that helped at all, but.
Yeah.
I would like to ask what you would think about a R1 as opposed to a R2 for that property?
What would be your concerns, I guess, primarily? Just to make sure I understand why you would be interested in that.
I just feel like, you know, I've heard a lot of comments today, and I think that a lot of people are concerned about the smaller lots. And I'd just like to know if you would consider, you know, an R1 with larger lots?
We would consider that, yes.
And considering that they have invested money in their homes and property and stuff, and I would feel the exact same way. I wouldn't want someone coming out there putting a cheaper house when I've spent all this money developing my house.
Yes, ma'am. One of the things about, and it's, I can say this, and I'm sure, you know, other folks that are in the industry can say this as well, you know, by the time we close on the property, put in infrastructure, approve the offsites, offsites meaning extend the water lines, put in bigger water lines, add the sewer infrastructure to the site, our cost of the lots would probably really surprise most people in this room. So in order to recoup the cost of those lots, the home values are significant. So I can tell you that, that the prices we're going to sell these homes for, even on a smaller lot, would be very close to, if not more than, the average home that's been built along Cross Bridges today. It has to be that way. I'm just telling you.
Half million dollar houses, $600,000 houses.
Absolutely.
No doubt in Summertown, they're building something for $400,000. Never thought I'd see.
It's, if you've not done this in a long time, it is unbelievable what the cost of construction is today.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a pet peeve that kind of hit a nerve up here, and that was with our schools. Mount Pleasant schools are already overcrowded, and Mount Pleasant schools already need redoing. Our high school, although I'm not the 19th, but probably third or fourth time, on a foundation that it could go up. We have put money in Spring Hill schools, we put money in Columbia schools. Them are, I texted in Mount Pleasant, but we've done nothing in Mount Pleasant schools. And I'm not happy with it at all. That's my comment, and I'm sorry if it offends anybody. But I think if my property check is going up like they did, and believe me, they went out of the roof for city and county, then I got a right to complain when Spring Hill is doing all this building, houses, and getting new schools, and we're overcrowded. Maybe I need a school board too, but I'm paying to do that. All I got to say.
One more?
Yes, sir. Short question, if you would, sir.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your indulgence. Is this gentleman the owner?
Who's that?
The gentleman that just spoke.
So I currently do not own the property, but I have, I'm an authorized representative of the owner.
We have a written letter from the owner saying that he, he represents the owner.
Understand, understand, understand.
Thank you.
Any further discussion from the board here?
One more, please. When I asked the agent what was going on back there, and the agent is the daughter of the owner, she said, they're going to be building close to one acre lots. I got that on a text that she sent me. And I said, really? They're going to put sewer in and build one acre lots? And then I said, that sounds strange to me. And then when I found out it was not, no, I wanted to be here, like to see the owner here. There's a reason they're not here today. Now, also what the builder explains, and I agree with him, building costs are outrageous, but they're also self-inflicted. So we build what we can afford. If we have to pay a lot of money for a land and put in all this infrastructure, that's on us, right? So just want to make that point.
Yeah. Thank you.
I know everyone's kind of talked about it a little bit, but the restrictions that are in place on Perry's Place, Terry's Place, whatever, the city's zoning ordinance that it has right now doesn't have an equivalent to that. But we have to work within the residential, you know, density designations that y'all have already in your zoning ordinance. You know, that restriction, like Will said, was done between, with the developer and the owner of the property at that time, and then passed on to those properties, which were part of that subdivision and recording. So you don't have the ability to put that on this property. You can talk about the other zones, but that's not something you can do.
Another question?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay. Corey, Rodney, the one, those nine considerations in this memorandum, I'm sure the city has reviewed those. Anything from those, any?
Yes.
Anything that we need to discuss or any negative impacts that is determined through that?
We've reviewed all of them, and I don't think you would have a positive recommendation if we had negative concerns.
And I think some of the, are the, you want the city staff to speak to their ability to provide those services or no?
Well, I mean, it's the same thing that you've said. There'll be a letter of availability, a professional engineer will say, this is what needs to happen to the water line. It's going to have to be expanded. It actually is a benefit to the city and the area because it would be expanded. And we, and that's what the plan of services is all about. I mean, we have staff that can tell you that, but it's going to be professional engineers. So they're going to be, the bottom line is going to tell us what has to be done.
And Bobby, we've reviewed this with all the staff for the past couple of months, and they've made tweaks to it, and this is the recommendation that it would be the benefit of the city to annex this property.
And one thing I did check on, water pressure has to be at a certain rate in all houses.
I don't think anybody knows that more than Bobby.
Yes, you already know that. So I want them to know that, that water pressure, because I heard that as one of the complaints.
Yeah.
There's a difference in what's required.
Right.
What you got to have to truly operate a town, so there's.
With what is proposed, obviously, would come out through the letter of availability. It would increase the size of the pipe and probably increase pressure.
Yeah, I wasn't asking to get into the, that's not my, that's my daddy's job, my mom's job here to get into that detail. Wanted to make sure that was, y'all were.
Yes, there's been a lot of consideration there for the things that we can control.
So right now, our voting on is the annexation request.
Yes. Do you think annexation is appropriate and is the plan of services as provided to you appropriate?
Yeah.
Do you recommend that the city commission pass those things?
Any discussion? I have time on motion.
Make a motion that we don't annex it?
I have a motion. I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do a roll call, make sure we get.
Ms. Cranberry?
I have somehow a vote right now. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't vote one way or the other.
So you want to put down as an abstention?
Yeah.
Bobby Nutt?
Yes.
Jennifer? Mr. Marshall and Mr. Hunter, yes, votes. So it's a four votes, it's the fourth motion.
The city commission on Tuesday night, just for the record.
Does it go Tuesday?
I don't know that.
Yeah, everyone here tonight, city commission making statements tonight.
19th, sorry, just a clarification. Tuesday, the 19th for clarification.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be on the 19th, but it's always on the third Tuesday of the month.
Right, I'm just.
Pardon?
I am.
Always at 6:00. And our agendas are on our webpage.
I don't know.
And our zoning ordinance is on our webpage.
It don't.
Our zoning ordinance is on our webpage. She updated one.
Corey, it be over.
It don't. When you hold up, Corey, it does not go to the city commission?
I don't know the answer to that. This is a new process. I need to look about whether this goes to the city commission or not. This could be the end of this process.
Yeah. The rezon app definitely would.
Okay. Rezoning does go to the city commission. This is our first annex that I've been on, so it will be, will it be on the agenda? Well.
That's what we have to determine.
Yeah, to determine.
You're welcome to come Tuesday night if you'd like, find out.
Okay. We think it's the same, but we got to check that to be sure.
Well, anyway, we'll move on.
And it be next week?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be next week. It has to be within 45 days.
Yeah.
45 days.
Right.
If an extension is considered by the city, there is a very specific notice that goes out.
Number eight, site plan request. Number nine, old business.
There is none.
Do you have any other business?
There is none.
So have any board and staff comments?
I think I'll free up.
Citizens comments have done one over. Look for a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion for adjournment.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate everybody coming.
Thank you.